All right. It's January fourteenth, all members of the Board of Selectmen are present. So we'll call the regular meeting to order and we will start with the Pledge of Allegiance. Pledge of Allegiance.
The United States of America, into your republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. All right, I have a couple of things I am going to add to the agenda at some point. So, but with that, the next item on the agenda is public comment. So we have a couple of folks in the room, not many, but we have a couple online, several online. If there is anybody, Ryan Walsh would like to speak. Ryan?
Hi, good morning, can you hear me? Yes, all right, so as you know, my name is Ryan Walsh, I live in town, I've been a member of the police department for twenty-three years. I'm currently the police union president, and while the union is still drafting a response to the PERF study with some concerns on it, I also have a concern over Carl's video message to the town. In your video message, Carl, you said you state, there's a crisis of confidence and credibility in the Old Sabre community within our police department. Nothing in the PERF study speaks of the confidence or the credibility of the police department, and we're just hoping you can quantify that a little bit in your meeting today.
All right, thank you. Carol?
Am I unmuted?
Yes, you are.
Okay, thank you. Members of the Board of Selectmen, I am very pleased that you're going to have comments on the PERF study and a discussion hopefully on the PERF study. I've read it, and numbers fourteen through eighteen, twenty-two, twenty-eight, and twenty-nine seem to be the town which you are the governing body of the town. So I hope that you can tackle those, you don't need the Police Commission, you don't need the Police Department to develop a policy for remote learning, having the OSPD use the same system of financial records as the rest of the town, or hiring an HR person. This is, to my opinion, something that you guys can do on your own without having to work with Police Commission or the Police Department. So I hope that these things can happen quickly, thank you.
Thanks, Carol. No one hands are raised. Any other, I want to give an opportunity, because there are several of the people online, I don't want to shut anybody down. Laura?
Good morning, everybody, I wanted to thank everybody on the Police Commission, I see some of you in the audience, and also the Board of Selectmen for getting us to this point with the release of the PERF study. So this is Laura Gray, I've lived in town for thirty years, and I tried my best to raise my children. Twelve years ago, my then twelve-year-old son, and as a result, my family were the victim of Mr. Sparrow's heavy-handedness, and we were publicly humiliated, which caused me to send my child to school outside of Old Sabre. I've closely followed the news, and I've spoken out against the behavior of Mr. Sparrow and some of his bad cops. But I also recognize that there are many, many good cops, and unfortunately, we've lost a good deal of those, a good number of those good cops, and I can't imagine how much that has cost the taxpayers money. Some people in this community have tried to silence me as I've spoken out against Mr. Sparrow. But now that the community has seen the report and read about all of his misdeeds in one place, there is ample support from removing Mr. Sparrow from his position immediately. His lack of integrity has violated the public trust, he has lied to us about employment outside of the department, and as a result, he's become a public safety issue. Our police officers, the dispatchers, and the public deserve so much better, and the Board of Selectmen and the Police Commission, everybody deserves so much better than Mr. Sparrow. And I'm also wondering if things stall, and if the town doesn't move swiftly, if Attorney General William Tong can assist us in removing him from his position. So what I would like to see is an immediate suspension and a replacement. So thanks again to everybody who's brought us to this point.
Is there anyone else online, virtual? Okay, seeing none, we can turn to the live audience, there's just a few folks in here. Start with you.
Yeah, sure, yeah, my name is Mark Hand. And thank you for finally addressing this issue, I've been paying attention for years to this, and it's glad to see it finally come to what I hope will be a smooth resolution. I just want to say that I have been paying close attention, and I know Board of Selectmen, you are our official governing body. I was not surprised by much of what I read in the report, I did read the entire report, I watched the presentation. I was surprised, Mr. Fortuna, by your reaction to that. Seemingly, we can take recommendations or ignore them, it didn't seem like you were prompted to really move. And I understand you need to be pragmatic. However, the Chief of Police has caused a lot of damage to our town. We've had lawsuits, we've had bad police officers kept on the floors, finally removed, exposing us to lawsuits, some of their behavior. But most of our police officers are fine people, the dispatchers too. And what concerns me is that if I were the CEO of an organization and someone came to me and said, "We're losing all these people because of this one person who's failing to lead," I would respond immediately with addressing the problem. I think we need to do that, I think Chief Sparrow is causing more headaches for our town, mainly for the police officers. I'm thankful for the police officers that are still with our force and that are going to stick it out while we go through this. But I don't want to lose any more police officers due to poor management. On top of that, it really concerns me that apparently he's got a couple other side gigs, one of which involves motor vehicles, and we buy a lot of motor vehicles every few years for the Police Department. I don't know why we're all okay with that, I cannot understand why we as a town are okay with our police chief, how he even has time to have these two other jobs, I don't know. But it's really infuriating, and I'm tired of our taxpayer money, and my time frankly showing up to Police Commission meetings over and over and over, and nothing being done. So something needs to happen, I think what needs to happen is Chief Sparrow should resign or be terminated. Thank you.
Okay. Anybody else in the audience? Okay, we'll move on to selecting comments, I'll turn it over to Matt and/or Scott.
So Carl, I think I'll save my comments, they're mostly around the PERF report until we come to the PERF, just to keep us on track.
I think I'm the same.
Okay. I do have a couple of things. So, let's see. So regarding, I'll respond regarding to Sergeant Walsh. The comments, I believe that subsequent to the PERF report, the community has lost some confidence and some credibility in, perhaps not the day-to-day officers out there, but certainly the leadership of the Police Department. Maybe it happened before, but now it's in writing. And whether it was in the past or it still exists, I think there was a crisis in culture within the Police Department, and I think that is evidenced in the PERF report. That's an opinion, and I'm not saying it's fact, I'm just saying that is my interpretation of what I read and what I have seen somewhat over the years and now subsequent to the PERF report. So I'll leave it at that. With regard to my reaction subsequent to the PERF report, a couple of things. There was a threat of litigation, number one, so I wanted to be somewhat circumspect with my comments. Secondly, there are a couple of recommendations in here, more than two or three, that deal with collective bargaining, so they cannot be implemented right now unless we engage with the union and immediately correct that. So there are thirty-one of these recommendations, many of them surround the Police Commission. To be frank, I've had multiple conversations with the Chair of the Police Commission since the release of the report. And today, I plan on putting before the board two recommendations. Immediately, low-hanging fruit, no doubt, but two things that we can implement. So that is, we will talk about it later, as Matt indicated. Couple other things that I want to bring up, just under comments, that many of you may not have an interest in. The probate court is in our building, and they have been a little bit dissatisfied with their space. They basically have an interior office, and they say they don't have enough room. So I want this board to know that I'm working with the judge of probate to determine whether they need to move out of Town Hall or whether we can work with them within Town Hall. If we work with them within Town Hall, it will probably involve some construction, a little bit of moving walls here and there, perhaps. I do have some comments, we have nine towns within our probate court. I do have some indication from those other towns that they would be interested in contributing to a renovation rather than having the probate court permanently moved to a private building where the costs would go, number one, up in year one and forever, as opposed to a renovation whereby there'd be some capital costs, and then the price would go back to what it is now. The initial recommendation from the Judge of Probate basically, I'm going to throw out an estimate, quadrupled the town's contribution, Old Sabre's contribution. The numbers aren't huge, we contribute six thousand right now, so, but that would be quadrupled, and then there'd be, in theory, rent increases subsequent to that. So I just want you to know that I am working with the Judge of Probate. The Old Sabre trash discussion continues with the Materials Innovation and Recycling Authority. That is very much in flux, we've had several meetings with the towns that take their recycling and municipal solid waste to the Essex Transfer Station. I've had those conversations privately with Senator Needleman and in conjunction with the other towns that go to the transfer station. In addition, the Chair of the MIRA Dissolution Authority Board, Bert Hunter, has been involved in trying to offload the contracts that go through 2027. I've talked to this board about this in the past, and we're working on that. Now whether the towns stay together and go to the Essex Transfer Station or whether several of the towns seek other options, I don't know what's going to happen, I still don't. This is clear as mud, and I'm not sure when that resolution will happen, but I'm guessing it will happen in the next two months. We will make a decision as to where Old Sabre will take its municipal solid waste, and this is only from the transfer station, it is not, if you have private subscription pickup, it does not affect you. So. Okay, why don't we move on, there's a couple of things to add to the agenda also, like I said, that might be very quick before we get into some of the other things in the agenda. So let's move to the minutes, assuming there are no other comments, I don't, from the board, okay? Prove of the minutes from the special meeting of December twenty-six, two thousand and twenty-four, is there a motion? Make that motion. Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor, aye, any opposed, motion passes. Business before the board. We're just kind of dotting some i's and crossing some t's with regard to the, this is the Steve Grant that we received to do sidewalk work from the Dairy Queen to basically Old Post Road and Route One, that intersection, the westerly intersection, all the way to the Westbrook Town Line. It's a Steve Grant we received in addition to a bond authorization we received from the state of Connecticut. Apparently, this was just a missing document, so I had to put it on the agenda to have this board authorize me to sign the program general municipal certification. So is there a motion for that?
I'll motion it.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any further discussion on that? I do hope to have that work started, we're aiming to target those sidewalks in the spring, early summer of 2025. So for construction or for bidding? Well, bidding, I would hope soon, construction. So it is not out to bid yet, Connecticut Water needs to repair, I don't know if you've been out that way, they've had a survey crew out there the last few days, so Connecticut Water has to do some initial work, and they have to replace a pipe prior to us going in and doing sidewalks. So hopefully that will get done either prior to or in conjunction with our work on the sidewalks. All right, so it's been moved and seconded, all those in favor signify by saying aye. All right. So it's hard to believe, we do have other business, guys, so I know. So the union, we did negotiate a union contract, it was in your package, correct?
Yes.
Okay, and this contract unfortunately was, blew way past the July one deadline, and I'm going to say it publicly, despite the town's efforts to have a contract ratified on time. That contract, those contract negotiations extended well beyond July one, which was the beginning of an uncontracted period essentially. But we did get there, I'm happy to go through this briefly. First of all, are there any questions with regard to the contract initially?
So, yeah, I have two questions, we could make sure, you know, you can get the red line version, just for reference.
Sure.
And so it's page twelve, and so it's the section that's looking at leave. And so it looks like, I just want to try to understand that instead of there being a an accumulated shared pool for employees that are out for an extended period of time, it looks like now the town is going to provide employees that can justify that they have, basically go on FMLA type of leave, that there is now an additional fifty days with pay, provided that they satisfy certain conditions, no abuse and.
Couple things.
Yeah.
We've used this provision once with the sick bank.
Okay.
Actually, Vicky Duffy, years ago, who we obviously have a pavilion named after. This is the sick lead bank, so we have software upstairs, we have timekeeping software, and this is the one thing we couldn't keep in the timekeeping software because it was so confusing. I've been trying to get rid of this language in the contract for two negotiating periods, and we finally got rid of it. I said to the union, I said, "We'll give you the time off, we'll just give it to you. Let's get rid of all this messy language in here." And upstairs in accounting, they have like one of these, keeping notes on who has what. So, you know, if someone is, like Vicky was, this sick, union and management get together and we determine what can we do to help this employee get back to work, hopefully. And it's never been denied under the sick bank, and I don't think it would be the intention of myself or hopefully not a future first selectman to deny it. So I said, "Let's just get rid of a ton of the bad language and codify it as to what we would normally do anyway." And that's essentially what happened there, Matt. And there were several parts like that. Let's go back to page one, section one point two, no one could figure out what that meant. This is another section that we've been trying to get rid of for several years, and the union finally agreed to cross it off. The pay rates were three percent. You know, inflation's hit everybody, let's just say that. Our previous raises were in the two and a half percent rate, reach, range. And what I would say is, moving forward, inflation has come down quite a bit. So as we move forward in future negotiations, I don't think we're starting at higher numbers. I think we're perhaps more returning to the norm. Again, there was on page six ridiculous language, that they had to receive twenty cents more per hour and stuff like that. We just said, "Look, we're not going to pay you less," and it's always going to be more than twenty cents if you get, you know, so just silly stuff in the contract that we, that's part of it. So there was some removal of bad language and then.
The other thing that jumps out to me is section fourteen point six, the bottom of page nineteen, this is.
I was just going to go through.
Okay, yeah.
Okay, I'm there, yep.
So this is the workers' comp.
So this, I'm just going to tell you, this codifies a practice that we've been doing for the last ten years. So all we say is, this is what we do anyway. So let's just put it in the contract.
Contract, yeah.
So that's all that was. With regard to page, on page twenty, the trading and license certification. We do, this is another thing we mostly do, so if guys have CBL, we want them to keep their CBL and the DPW drive. So we don't expect them to pay for that, and likewise with some of the other licenses. And we've always encouraged further education, that's how Bridget Reardon became our new assessor. She said, "I'd like to go to school," and some of the folks in accounting took some accounting classes, additional college level accounting classes, so. And then you see in fifteen point two, we just got rid of, obviously with the approval of the CAO, some time off, but eliminated personal affidavit, not sure what a personal affidavit is. So there weren't a ton of changes in the contract, a little bit on insurance, as you saw, not much. You know, we're at a five thousand family deductible. I don't know that there's much public sector room to go further on that private sector. I know they go up to ten thousand, but there hasn't been that movement yet, and we do want to remain competitive. So we don't want, you know, there's a point, there's a fine line between saving money and having employees say, "Your insurance is good enough for me to come work for the town." So those are, you know, not, there wasn't a ton in there, I'm sorry it took so long. I have to tell you, I've been a little forgetful in bringing this to the board because I probably should have done this a month ago, it just kept slipping my mind, and I didn't put it on the agenda. There's been no effect. I basically indicated that I believe the Board of Selectmen will ratify it, and so no one's been held up. So I'm going to move, approve, ratification of the contract, which the union has already done.
Okay, I'll second that.
Questions, comments? All right, good, thank you, guys. You're in on all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All right. Discussion and possible action on refund of doping permit fees, let's just do this all in one, I'll make that motion, is there a second?
Sorry, second.
Any questions on any of them? There are none, all those in favor signify by saying aye. I am going to take a point of personal privilege here and. So I'd like to add to the agenda a private road name change, if I may. And I just want to add it to the agenda, so I'm going to make a motion to add to the agenda a road name change of a private road.
I'll second that.
Okay, can we just get it on the agenda? Okay, all those in favor?
All right.
So there's a road at the end of, I think it's Schoolhouse called Squabbrook. There's four houses on there. I think four houses and a lot. And one of the residents, I will, she may not want me to say her name publicly. One of the residents there said, "That is an offensive name, squaw is," I'm not educated well enough on this, but obviously a derogatory Native American word for, I guess, a young lady, I'm not sure. And so she brought it to my attention and said, "Squabbrook, there are squabrooks or squaw roads all over the country, and they're being changed. And we on our road would like to change our name because we don't want this name anymore." I did a little research, she did a little research, and, you know, we have control over public road name changes, not private road name changes, but at the end of the day, there still needs to be something on the land records so that when someone does a title search, there's a chain of titles saying, "Oh, everything from Squabbrook went to," and they're proposing Hawkbrook. So we don't need to have a public hearing like we do with public roads, we don't need to do various things. But we do need to do, I believe, a notice of decision, which is what we've done on private, previous public road name changes. So what she, what one of the homeowners puts in front of me was that they have a majority, three out of the four homeowners agree, and they couldn't get the one. Apparently, that person mostly lives in Florida, but the research indicates that a majority of a private road, there's, it's not an association. So there's no governing body of the private road can, a majority of the owners can vote, and that would be sufficient. I'm going to accept that, and they have voted as such, and it's been presented to me that they voted as such in writing. So she's asked me to move this forward. I am going to put a July one date on there for the road name change, just to give the postmaster time, make sure there's proper notification of that, give Sarah time in there, if there's other things that need to be changed, I just want to give people the proper opportunity, they may want it sooner, but I think July one, you know, the assessors' records, all those things, tax collector, obviously. So that's what I'm proposing, and the notice of decision basically states the owners, and the current address, the assessor's map block number, and the new street address. So everything is going from Squabbrook to Hawkbrook at the desire of the homeowners on this road. So I'm going to make a motion that the notice of decision for road name change from Squabbrook to Hawkbrook be filed with the town clerk. Second, any further discussion? I know it's a little, but.
So it's one of these things where you don't want to open up a, in my opinion, you don't want to open up a Pandora's box where you're going to have everybody coming up to us saying, "I want to change my road name for this reason, that reason."
No, no, I mean, it's a private road, we don't govern a private road. It's, there's no Pandora's box here, it's just, we don't normally, this is not something we would ever touch, but there still needs to be something in the land record, so. But there still needs to be something in the land record, so. That's my understanding, you know, a majority can vote. We just have to file a notice of decision because the majority of the homeowners are, they can't file a notice of decision, the town clerk won't take it. It should come from the official act of the Board of Selectmen. So. I did very briefly consult with town council and they said. Yeah, there's not much for you to do, but this has to be done. Otherwise, there's no chain of title. So if other private roads want to change their name, they're more than welcome to change their name, but we, it's up to them. So.
And, and in terms of the, the written. Record of this, of vote that the, yeah. Was hoping that it was unanimous and not three out of four.
Well.
Right, so.
Yeah.
You've seen signatures from.
Yes.
Three out of four homeowners and the, the one that is not living full time in town is.
I haven't heard from and the absent, they're in Florida. The, yeah, I mean, look. I don't know what I'm stood up. This is, it, it, from my limited research, my limited talk with council. It appears to be appropriate. If it's not, we'll change it back, uh, you know, but I don't think that's gonna happen, I don't think there's. Um, but, all right, so with that, it's been moved and seconded. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
All right.
Thank you for that. Okay. Perf report uh, is next on the agenda. It's on for discussion. Just to set the stage uh, for this discussion. I do have an exit interview policy that I'm gonna put before the board today, we can add it to the agenda. It would not only apply to the police department, it would apply to the town. As it should. So I, we, there's a lawyer that we do some work with on HR issues. Uh, her name is Robin Kaler from Rose Kaler. Um, Robin has done our employee handbook, which is. I think we're best in, in the area. Um, we have a supervisor's handbook and, and employee handbook, so it tells supervisors. How to handle certain issues as they come up. We recently worked with her on an HR issue we had for an employee. Um, and I, I feel like Robin is uh, very good in this area, I've actually talked with our town council. And mentioned that and they were just like, you know, that's a very strong choice. So uh, I do have that, we can add that to the agenda, not now, we can do that right after. And it has been stated by uh. One of the public commentators. Um, as to. Several of these are within the town's purview. Number three, an exit, and then to the outside OSPD should conduct exit interviews. Um, I think sixteen. Uh, the town should seek a legal opinion, that's whether Chief Spear's business relationship with Maverick Motor Group. Complies with the town code of ethics. So again, uh. I will just state it right here, um, I had several conversations. With town council yesterday with regard to this issue and I said. Do you have somebody that you would recommend? So. I have two names. This is, well, let's, we just got this last week, right? I know. A draft issue was circulating before, but um, the final report came out, I think prior action would have been inappropriate. Um, but with regard to number sixteen, I do have two names. That. Uh, let's see, one of them came from our HR attorney and one came from our town council. So I will look at two people. To determine, uh, well, to hire. To look into this. Um, so this will happen also. Uh, so that is three and sixteen. And uh. Remote work policy, that's not something I have before you today, okay? Uh, look. I do think. I do think departments are very specific, so do I believe the police department? Should have a remote work policy, I do. I also believe that might be different than the town remote work policy. I might be old school, but. We're open from eight thirty to four thirty. We're public facing. I'm not gonna work from home every day because people come into my office. Can my finance director work from out of state? She can, and she does sometimes. When, when she and her husband go away, uh, and she works. Right, it's not like she's not working, she's there every day. Uh, can the tax collector work from home? I don't think so. Can a patrol officer work from home? I don't think so, so. I do believe this should be, there should be a policy, I'm not saying there shouldn't be. But it's not something that we drafted yesterday and I have before the board today. And I am old school with regard to. The town, I think people should show up to work. Uh, when folks come in. They should be helped, I mean, uh, that's what we do, that's, that's our existence, we're here for the public, so. You know, years ago, uh, we had an employee. Who was pregnant and not feeling well a lot, but she wanted to work. Did she work from home? Absolutely, we set her up. Our former town chairman, and um, so. There are instances where that can happen, it happened a little bit during COVID. Uh, but we were back to work pretty quickly. So yes, we will move forward on that. But uh, it, it may not happen immediately and certainly it has to happen. With the approval of the chief administrative officer. So, and number fifteen and sixteen are somewhat related um, in terms of negotiating a more restrictive and transparent. Terms with the chief regarding outside employment. Um, I think what we need to do is. You know, there is a contract that has, that um, the chief signed in two thousand nine. You know, the, whether uh, that is a contract that is uh, still operative. Maybe some will question that, maybe some won't. Uh, I'm not gonna, you know, the, the chief certainly thinks that contract is still in full effect, and I think the police commission. I don't want to speak for the police commission, but has generally recognized it. I, I, I think that as long, you know, the chief has to devote his full time duties, obviously, to his job and I. There should not be a conflict of interest and uh, we will look into that and there shouldn't be anything that takes away his time. But it does clearly state in this contract that there's something that allows for. A side business. Now that side business has typically been training folks in um, EMT. And he's done a lot of that. And he's done some of that with the towns, uh, with the fire department, with the police department, so. Uh, that is something I think they're, they are related. And um, they, they'll be addressed as best they can. Uh, I think all parties, I agree with number seventeen, we should all be. Signing a code of ethics to annual complete, that's what I have to do, I serve, Matt, you're, you're a standup lady. I serve on the uh, MIRA dissolution authority and because it's quasi-state, I have to sign. Um, I have to disclose any interest I might have in any other businesses, trusts, even my, some of my stock holdings. So um, that is definitely something we can tackle. Um, if you're a town employee, obviously, so. So the ti, and then number twenty-two is the town should strike from future contracts. With the chief, with the chief. So I think we probably all agree with number twenty-two, that uh. That it should not be. Worded the way it is worded, certainly, with regard to evaluating that position. We can look at the two EAP programs as they recommend. And we can talk to, we can work with the EAP, EAP providers to determine why the employees are not using it as much. But um, look. You know. This board. In my opinion, is going to work very closely. With the police commission, a lot of this is put on the police commission, you're a volunteer board, you are scheduled to meet once a month, I know you meet more than that. But. You know, we are the government, you know, we're, we're the um, we're the board that can take action and. You know, we will work with the police commission to assist as need be. I have offered. And uh, the chairman has accepted um, legal counsel advice if. If the chairman needs advice, he'll call me and say, do you mind if I contact, I say no, contact town council. I do not want the chairman of the police commission to run afoul of any laws or statutes, so. We actively um, discuss. What might be ahead and how the police commission uh, might or might not take action, so. Um, those are some very um, brief comments that I have with regard to the perf report. I, I think the perf report, if you read it. Is, I mean, I don't think there's any other way to say it, it's damning. It is, it's, it's, doesn't paint. A, a pretty picture. So I'll, I'll leave it at that. And we do have some action items, uh, at least one action item, so. I don't know if, you know, I'm not asking either of you, one of you to comment, look, there's gonna be more to come on this, certainly, so. Matt, you look like you're chomping at the bit.
Well, I have some comments and they are. And I just want to communicate to everybody, this is our first chance to speak publicly about it, so I read. Think it's important now that the full report is out to just, I know that there's still some whispers. The full board of selectmen have the draft report and I just want to reiterate that what I see in the final report. Is in line with how perf describes it. In the report that quote, none of the updates to the final report have materially amended any of the reports substantive conclusions. I think that when you look at the final report, you can see. The con, the context of any comments that were given, and I think that. Perf did a really good job in sharpening language and clarifying language in the final report. I just want to thank everybody that participated, all citizens, former and current police officers and staff that participated and took the time to be part of this. And I want to make sure that we as the board of selectmen are supporting our officers, our dispatchers, people that volunteer, that give their time and serve our community. The board is. We, we have opportunity today, I want us to continue to have opportunity for the public to speak, I know we didn't have that chance last week, I think it'll continue, we have police commission meeting scheduled. Or a selectman is meeting. I've had a lot of time to absorb this since we had the draft report before Thanksgiving, but you know, the thing that. Hit me was actually listening to perf present the report last week. Their deliberate, measured approach as professionals really made the report land differently. Than when I read it on paper and, and I agree with how you describe it, Carl, it's, it's very troublesome. Troubling to hear the findings that are presented here. And I think that we as board of selectmen need to take swift action to address as many of these recommendations as possible because this is. Our public safety apparatus and this is also for our town citizens and it's also the working environment for people to put their lives on the line for all of us every day. And I'm glad you've, you know, been in conversation with the chair of the police commission. Um, I understand that the police commission has a role to play here and, and I second what you're saying in terms of. The board of selectmen has a role, we authorized the perf report. Um, and worked in conjunction with the police commission, I think we need to support the police commission. As we make decisions here as to how to uh, take up these recommendations and what to do next. You, you've hit on most of the recommendations that I see as clearly being within the board of selectmen, town's ability to start to move on. But the other, the other piece that I think is, you know, just in terms of being deliberate is a little bit challenging is, you know, several of these. Are talking about. The police chief and I just want to make sure that we're on the same. We're, we're on the same page in terms of how to actually have this conversation in public. Where we need to be in executive session because we're talking about performance of somebody. And where we can have an open conversation about this, that, that for me, I, I want clarified so that I. Cause I feel right now that I'm kind of dancing around what we can talk about and what we can't talk about.
So. My comments are, are limited at this point to what I read in the report and not an opinion. Publicly about the performance. Obviously, look, when you talk about an employee. If you're going to talk about an employee's performance, uh, then I. That would be an executive session, the employee technically, not technically, I think is required. To have an invitation to be in that executive session.
That's my understanding.
But as you say, uh, we can move forward with legal counsel.
And then, well, my comments will be limited, I think I echo your sentiments, um, it's been a, it was a comprehensive report, I think they did an effective job of. Providing us with. Information that we need to uh, address, align our efforts and then uh. Demonstrate to the people in town that we're, we're taking action based on the recommendations that were provided to us and then we'll. Evaluate each of the recommendations and determine, you know, how we should move forward as a community. I think many of those things are in place and will be in place as we move forward.
So the two action items today, um, one is actually a motion and the other one is. I mean, if I have your. Blessing, I mean consensus more than anything else. Is to uh, act on um. Number sixteen, which is the town should seek a legal opinion as to whether Chief Spear's business relationship. With Maverick Motor Group complies with the town's code of ethics. So. As I said, I have two names, then call both, probably talk to both. And uh, make a determination as to which direction to go in. Hire a person, let him go. That's, that's the idea. Uh, and that. I think satisfies and I can. A pride, you know, move, uh, keep the board prized as to any developments on that. And uh, so that's that, uh, other than that, we have this exit interview policy, did, did you guys get this?
Yes.
So just for the public and whoever here, um. It's boring. By the way, I hope Channel Three is gonna cover the road name change, you know. So uh, the exit interview policy is. Uh, the purposes memorandum is to outline a new town policy for employees that are leaving their purpose or their employment with the town. We are adding a new step to the separation process, requesting all regular, requesting all regular employees participate. In an exit interview, you can't force anybody. We have hired a law firm that specializes in human resource matters, Rose Kaler. To perform the exit interviews, when you learn, and this is to the department. When you learn of an employee's decision to leave. You, the department that are responsible for reporting that separation to me or the chief administrative officer. In a timely manner. We will need the name of the employee that intends to leave with their final day of service. And then my office will arrange a meeting with Rose Kaler and the employee. Please be aware that notice should be forwarded to the accounting area also. So that they can prepare the final salary and benefit payments for the employee. Important, important moments in an employee's career with the town are when they are first hired and then when they decide to separate. The town presently has a robust onboarding procedure and we are committed to improving our exit. Process, so that's it, it's not on the agenda, I'm gonna move to add that to the agenda. Second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Let's just make the motion to approve this and then we can discuss it if need be, uh, I'll make a motion to approve it, sir, second.
Second.
All right. Any. Any, I mean, it's not official yet, so if there's any additional um, comments to it, I'm happy to. Listen and maybe incorporate that. And by the way, it's a policy. If you come back in two weeks and say, hey, this sentence should be, we can amend the policy at any time.
And. So in terms of once Rose Keller. And so in terms of once Rose Keller conducts the exit interviews, they'll just provide this to. The first selectman or?
I would say uh, to the first.
Board of Selectmen?
Yeah, and then that can be shared. Alright.
True.
Alright, uh, it's been moved and seconded. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Alright, thank you. That is helpful. I think that's a very good idea. You know, a couple other things. Um, the report. I think Chubb and I, Alfred Wilcox and I, the chairman of the police commission, I don't mean to refer you casually. Have gotten a couple of emails, Matt, you got one also, which went into my junk mail. So I responded this morning. Um, obviously, people, several people looking for immediate action. Really pressing me and the board of selectmen to um, take some action. I did get uh, and uh, last night, um, Chairman Wilcox and I both got one. Uh, from a gentleman and uh, we had the same reaction to it. It was very balanced. A comment. Just saying that the report was very disturbing. Uh, if. If the chief were to show some. Serious action towards improving his management style, then. Maybe he should, you know, be given a second chance, but if not, he shouldn't be. That was one. Others were like. Basically saying what some of the folks on mine here said, that there should be immediate action towards suspension or termination. Uh, Dan Welch. Sent me an email. It looks like it's just to me. Maybe somebody else did receive it. And uh. He mentioned two of the recommendations that come to mind. Are the need for independent exit interviews, which we've taken care of today, and a clear policy regarding remote work. So um, that is something that, uh, so that is something that we can help the police commission with. Okay, so. I can have um, Robin, Robin Kaler, Rose Kaler, help us with that and put something in front of you for you to work with. Okay? So. So those are two comments, but obviously, he does send this to the police commission, uh, Dan Welch did also. I also received, and I wanna uh, be very balanced here. From um, Allison Tanner, who is a patrol officer, I think she's per medium. I I want. I hope I'm right.
I think she's a school resource officer.
Oh, she says, S R L, okay. Uh, she was very upset with the report. Uh, she feels they, and I, it's a, it's a very long letter, um, two and a half pages. She feels uh, perf did not objectively evaluate the benefits. She she very much got into the benefits. Um, so she felt that. The benefits that were at play. Prior to July one of two thousand twenty-four have led to a lot of the officers leaving. Contrary to what perf said. And that the new contract that we negotiated. Is going to lead to more officers staying. And um, she indicates that she, in fact, is uh, interested maybe in becoming full time if. If that uh, opens up. Look, did we? Did we, you you saw the contract. Did we improve the benefits? Slightly, um, maybe someone to, you know, I don't, I don't know how substantial they were. We improved the benefits. It's a negotiation. The uh, the police union was looking for a cost of living increase. We did not do that. You know, looking for bonuses. The chief, of course, in two thousand twenty-three. Put before us ten thousand dollar retentions and finder's fees and none of that came through, none of that. Is in there. So um, we, I think we had a great negotiation with the police union. And I, by the way, and we did reduce the. The time to retirement from twenty-five to twenty-three. Twenty-three years and out. So if they're hot, if they're hot on boards and stays with us for twenty-three years, they can retire. That's great. I mean, I'm happy for that. If 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 we have officers who will do that. So. She does talk about the benefits, um, and then she does defend the chief uh, very vociferously, I would say. And uh. Just feels like the uh, chief um, has done a very good job. She would defend the chief's ability to do this job to the ends of the earth. And uh, is complimentary of the chief. So it's a long letter. I I do wanna be fair and say that this is one of the. Uh, pieces of correspondence we did receive.
Okay, yeah, I I just wanna make a comment regarding, uh, and I've heard this a little bit, that. The perf study was supposed to focus on. Pension benefits, salaries, and. From my point of view.
And organizational culture.
Right, and or it was supposed to focus on why are we losing police officers? And so it looked at pension and benefits. It also looked at organizational culture. And for me, the walking away from this, perf showed that old Sabrocks pension and benefits fall right in the middle of the pack. Right? Which is where you wanna be. You don't wanna be the best because then maybe you're putting too much out there. Right? And the taxpayers would come, be coming to us with other issues. You don't wanna be the worst because then you're not competitive. We fall right in the middle. And so really, everything then did shift to the other issues, and that's where the thirty-one recommendations are focused. So.
So I do know, um, and we don't have to get into it today. I do know the police commission has passed a budget. Yes, uh, last night, I think last night, I guess I did watch that meeting. Um, I'm also rewatching, or not rewatching, I'm watching your meeting from last Thursday. Also, where there was a lot of back and forth on the evaluation tool with the chief. So um, I'm gonna uh, finish watching that today. So, look, we're we're gonna come back to this. Um, we'll work on a remote work policy. I'll see if I can get something that is more specific to police departments. And we'll work on one for town hall. And again, look, maybe, maybe I should be criticized, but I mean, I want people to come to work, okay? I do. You know, when, when people come in here. They wanna see people and they wanna be helped. And uh, like I said, there are certain positions that I think in town hall. That could effectively work from home, but many cannot. So that is something we'll work on.
I I agree, it needs to be separate.
Same is true for the police department. Um, so, alright.
Carl, did you intend for us to vote on um, council, on, and asking council to explore an opinion or are we just gonna take that?
I'm, I was really asking more for, is it the consensus of the board that I can move forward?
Yes.
And that you're gonna trust me on who I might hire based on the advice of council. That's, you know, and if you want, we can wait two weeks and I can bring you someone. You know, that's the other option. I'm happy to have a vote on it too. I'm not looking to do anything independently. Whatever. I'll, I'll see how this develops. If it's something I feel like we need to bring back before the board, but it just says the town. Should seek a legal opinion. I seek legal opinions all the time.
Yeah, I I think that we should just move and seek a legal opinion.
Okay. Alright, so we're gonna move on from that. If we're ready to. Okay? Alright. And then we'll be done with the meeting very shortly. So the last thing is uh, appointments, uh, reappointment of Lorraine Cortez Tassa. On the pension and employee benefits board. She's been an excellent member. And she lives up on Beaver Dam Trail, so she's gonna be very excited to get that culvert done uh, this summer. So I'm gonna move her, her reappointment. Is there a second? I'll second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Alright, with that, um, if there's no further business for the board, I'm for German. Second, all those favorites. Alright, thank you.